I get like a form that's on the for each of the address if there's an incorrect zone.
Okay.
Between for each one and the two, there's two different lists I'm looking at.
Okay.
So just try to do that to pick them. So John, just say something for a second, just say anything for like.
Welcome to our meeting.
That was supposed to recognize the speaker and then pick up on that right now. It doesn't appear to be, is it up there on the screen too?
Yep, I got Sharon's there.
Okay.
And you're there, okay.
Why is the owl not looking at John?
Yeah, it was supposed to rotate.
And what its voice activated?
Yeah, so this thing is supposed to pick up on wherever the speaker is.
Okay, I'm right here, look at me, here I am. Oh, it's leaving me. Looks like it's just making a note, so. That's all right, wait till Thursday, it's gonna be fifty six or something like that, so now you'll have all the floods.
Yeah. Kind of like this weekend, it was what sixty on Saturday. Yeah. Saturday was nice.
I was on a foot of lights all day.
Hey Roger.
It's been a while. Twelve or fourteen inches.
He's working. Work everything out, Doug. Okay.
Why is the owl not looking at John? Pick up on. Yeah, it was supposed to rotate.
Hi Sharon.
And what its voice activated?
Yeah, so this thing is supposed to pick up on wherever the speaker is.
Okay, I'm right here, look at me, here I am. Oh, it's leaving me. Looks like it's just making a note, so.
A little chilly this morning.
That's all right, wait till what Thursday, it's gonna be fifty six or something like that, so now you'll have all the floods.
Yeah. Kind of like this weekend, it was what sixty on Saturday. That was the season. Yeah. Saturday was nice.
I was on a foot of lights all day. I couldn't believe how much ice there was.
Hey Roger. It's been a while.
Twelve or fourteen inches. It's a long back.
You're fixing the wrong one.
Is the owl?
Yeah. Sharon's over there. Hey Bill.
Hey.
Morning.
Good morning Bill.
Morning. I'm setting in there, so you're facing the owl.
Okay.
Now. She's recognizing you.
Sorry, hi owl.
We hear from there? Morning.
Morning.
Morning Matt.
Oh yeah.
Good.
Are we expecting Chris to call in?
Yeah, first Freddie's gonna call in for Dan to talk about the SOW and then Chris will be right behind you. Are we using that intercom then?
Who are you, the owl?
Oh, you can call into the owl?
Oh yeah. The owl will do it all and it's the sound in this thing is awesome.
Oh, that's split, so it's split screen.
Sharon, how can you hear everybody right now?
Sharon, can you hear us?
Gotta unmute, gotta unmute, yeah, I can hear you just fine, the splits, the split screen is kind of cool.
Yeah, isn't that great? Okay, so the sound is good, the volume is up.
Okay, it's nine o'clock, so I will call this February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, Legger Retirement Board Regular Meeting to Order. Is Christine here or is?
She's, she's on Zoom too.
Oh, okay, all right, and we have Don make the introduction.
I'm sorry. Oh, okay, so Freddie, hi, can you hear us?
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Just so you guys are aware, because of scheduling situations, we're putting these two ahead of everybody else. Freddie's gonna go first to talk about the statement of work and then Chris will jump in for the fourth quarter. It's all yours, Freddie.
Okay, so.
Does any, but I'm sorry, so everybody has the, so it was sent out in November and it's been on the agenda the last month, it wasn't discussed, so Freddie's here to answer questions or discuss it in a more detailed. This, remember to redefine, I'm sorry, to the, review the actual deterrent contribution of the pension plan and look at extending out the unfunded payments beyond. I'm trying to speak from memory here, Freddie, I think we're scheduled for six years right now, is that correct?
Yes, a while back, about twelve years ago, the funding policy, the plan was voted upon and at that time, it looked like there was approximately an eighteen year horizon over which to amortize any past service that was not yet funded for, so at that point, that eighteen to twenty year period absolutely made sense. In the funding policy, it also states that from time to time, the plan will look at assumptions and see how they affect contribution levels and what should be adjusted, if anything, on the assumptions over time, now that we're closing in on six years for the last valuation, so in another year or so, come twenty twenty-three, when we do the next valuation, there will only be four years left to amortize any past unfunded liability to the plan, so that, or as you can imagine, any unfunded amount, when you're only taking one quarter of that amount and you're adding that to the contribution level, you're gonna see some huge spikes in your contribution level. And written right into your funding policy, it states that the main goal or objective of the funding policy is such that you try to keep your contribution level pretty consistent over time, so while fifteen or so years ago, fourteen, fifteen years ago, it seemed reasonable that the eighteen year time horizon was reasonable, it may not be so now, maybe things didn't work out exactly as expected and we're coming to the tail end, but the average active participant is only about fifty-five years old, so the time horizon of the plan probably still is another maybe eight to ten years in duration. So I, I may recommend after looking at the study that we adjust the current funding policies that we don't have these tail spikes in the next few years in your contribution level, so by looking at what the average lifetime of the plan is left, we can look at how can we smooth out those amortization payments for any unfunded liabilities that are being added into your annual requirement for the cash contribution, so that's the main goal of this study is to project out contributions over the next four to five years and do that at both the current investment rate of six and a quarter and then relook at things, if we look at that cost requirement at a six percent interest rate, so just looking at slightly changing the expected return on assets, which is also the same rate at which we discount your liabilities, to see what your contributions level, contribution levels look like for the next handful of years. And in doing that, we may make a recommendation to lengthen out and, and reset the amortization period for the unfunded liability portion of the contribution that gets amortized each year, so the main goal is to focus in on the expected return on asset rate, but again, it's twofold, we also want to take into account what's the time horizon of the plan and should we make a recommendation or look at lengthening and resetting that amortization period, so that that's the two points of the study. So I hope that explanation is helpful, be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
I think it makes sense, I mean, we made some assumptions way back when and it makes reasonable to look, relook at the assumptions and see when we want to move the window out a bit. Yeah, especially if it's gonna mean a significant increase in the contribution, annual contribution, it'll make budgeting that much harder. It doesn't, I don't think it puts a, any, doesn't add any risk to per se, right, you were just saying, right now, the average is fifty-five, so their window is, they still got about a five plus year window for those people to retire, so seems reasonable.
Roger? Sharon? Nothing, okay. Well, I.
I thought you did a good job explaining it, I don't have any questions.
I, I do have a concern about increasing the, and I've expressed it about increasing the contribution. I think we're doing very well, looking at the six and a quarter return, if you look at our past years, even with some of the bad years we've had where we've actually, you know, had a, a loss, we've still done very, very well with our investments. So, you know, I would like to see us more level funded, if you look at us, you know, just recently it was in the paper that Noah, which is borrowing millions of dollars to fund their plan, which shows what conditions some of these plans are in, I wouldn't even go into the state's situation, which the hole they could never dig out of, I think Legger is doing well, I would like to see us flat flash fund this, at least for this coming year, but we'll, we'll deal with that with the increase, so. Any, any other, when, when we get to that motion, any other questions or comments?
No, I, I, I agree, John, I think it's worth doing because again, we're not making the full commitment at this point that we would change it, we're just gonna get some additional data, but I, I think it's worth taking a close look at.
Could you elaborate a little bit, Dan, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what you're saying there, what you.
No, no, what I'm saying, I agree with the study, I think we should go ahead and do it, we should take a hard look at then, and then I, I also like the idea of looking at two discount rates, the six percent as well, so we have a little better handle on it, but as she pointed out, when we look at the average age of the recipients now, we still have a ways to go on this and I think it's worth having the data in front of us, so we don't have any surprise spikes in the budget, it's just worth doing the study to have the data in front of us.
Agreed, and I do agree on the study, I think that's absolutely important, okay. All right, anything else, any other questions? Mayor, Matt? Okay, okay, well, thank you very much, we appreciate it and we will be acting, did we?
We'll need to vote on it later on the agenda.
That's right, right, okay, all right, very good, well, thank you very much, we appreciate your.
Thank you, nice meeting you, Freddie.
You're welcome. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you mind if I stay on just for a little bit to listen to the investment review part, I was just back in the background here, if that's okay?
Public meeting, Freddie, anybody can listen to it.
Spend all day with us.
Stay after the meeting, okay, all right, with that, we'll move right into our next presentation, I appreciate Chris being with us, so why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, great, I hope everybody can hear me okay, sometimes Zoom seems to be a little finicky versus eighteen, but play I'm coming across pretty clear. So morning, we have the fourth quarter investment review, it's our full report, you may recall that at the January meeting, we provided you sort of the flash report, which provided the kind of capital market returns for the, for the quarter and calendar year, and then we got the granular performance of the, of the portfolio. Um, the couple pages just are just some information across our business lines and our major research group, you can certainly edit your perusal, but I want to just focus in on the government's calendar, right, so, so we, we developed this fiduciary governance calendar, really to kind of take a holistic approach at investment consulting and it's really designed to engender discipline throughout the year that, you know, we're covering a couple of key topics to keep you, you know, as stewards of the plan, informed on trends, informed on sort of the fee structure of the, of the pension program. We review the investment policy statement, which is part of practice and policy review, right, so it's an important governance tool, we review that at least annually and, and we will make modifications to that and bring that to your attention if necessary. And this quarter is, you know, a focus on asset allocation and, and, and these efforts are, you know, each year we capital market assumptions and they are, you know, very long term in nature, but the objective is really to just reaffirm that the portfolio's asset allocation, you know, tends to be in line with your, you know, six and a quarter discount rate and that six and a quarter discount rate is, is pretty conservative, right? If we were to canvas, you know, as we do sort of in the third quarter here with this municipal landscape, we give you sort of detail on what other Connecticut plans are doing around the discount rate and, and funded status in general, but at six and a quarter, I would say you're a pretty healthy, probably fifty basis points below what I would consider either the mean or the median discount rate used for, for Connecticut plans and that's come down, right? If you were to look at five years ago, I would say that number was, you know, probably north of seven and a quarter, but, but that number has come down forever. So this effort is really just to reaffirm that sort of your overall investment structure, portfolio structure does align with that discount rate and, and for some of our clients, as an example, that are using a seven and a half or seven quarter discount rate and maybe have a fifty fifty allocation in the public markets, you know, it's more of a concerted effort on our part to educate the group on, you know, the pitfalls of falling short from that discount rate, so maybe their portfolio needs to be more aggressive, right, in order to achieve that, that, that return assumption, but you'll see six and a quarter is, is fairly conservative and we're not suggesting any changes, although we are looking forward and, and maybe some tweaks to the, to the portfolio and I'll touch upon that in, in a moment. So you could take a look at our January twenty-two outlook at, at, at your leisure, this just kind of gets, you know, kind of across, you know, our outlook for twenty twenty-two and you know, as we point out, I think absent, you know, a good deal of fiscal stimulus and maybe a little bit more focus on economic growth and, and the corporate landscape in terms of the strength of corporate earnings, you're likely to see a little bit more volatility this year than we experienced over the last three years, I think we have to be certainly cognizant of the amount of stimulus, monetary fiscal stimulus that was in the marketplace, whether it's action, action by the Fed policy or, you know, through efforts by the, by the Fed to, you know, provide stimulus checks, most recent infrastructure bill, I think to the tune of one point, you know, two trillion dollars, just a lot of you know, money into the economy and what was different than the financial crisis, a lot of that money went into the hands of the consumer, you know, they're thinking that gets back into the economy and it's actually, you know, kind of shown to be a, a pretty good approach that, you know, it served to provide really a little bit of backstop during the pandemic to give participants, or excuse me, consumers some additional income. So we do think going forward, economic growth's likely to be a little bit more, more tempered, we do think the reduction of monetary and, and fiscal policy, certainly a little bit of Fed tightening, you're seeing that in the markets today with a little bit more volatility, higher rates, right, so this time last year, I think we had a ten year yield of around ninety-two hundred basis points, we're a little bit north of, of two percent on the tenure, but the market is not overly, and I say the market, the bond market is not overly concerned with inflation, so right now, we've got some levels that are just now through the roof across the board. A lot of that is supply chain driven, you're seeing the higher oil prices more recently, given sort of the, the, the risk at the Ukraine Russian border, but we do think a lot of this inflation is peaking in a drop down to a little bit more, you know, kind of normalized levels, probably a little bit north of the two percent, but you know, it's gonna take a little bit of time as we work through sort of the supply chain challenges and, and we do think that the Fed's policy to reduce their balance sheet and, and, and act on further interest rate hikes, which they've telegraphed, you know, is likely to kind of curtail those, those high levels, but we do think, you know, absent a lot of the stimulus, this market's gonna really be focused on the health of the economy and, and corporate earnings and you know, we think the returns this year will be far, far less robust than we've experienced over the last three years, so I think if you were to kind of, you know, kind of put a scale together, it just feels like we've got a little bit more headwinds right this year than we did last year, I think you could just say, hey, we got a lot of tailwinds, you know, towards the market and all the stuff that I mentioned. This year feels a little bit differently, like we, we've got some pretty good headwinds that, that we need to address and see it at, you know, more short term. So what we do is just modeling efforts, I won't get too granular, but you can see we have a current mix of your portfolio, right? We're running, just let's just say for purpose of discussion, a, a sixty forty portfolio, sixty percent equities across the global markets and then forty percent fixed income and a kind of a mathematical exercise here, using our capital market assumptions, right, that we produce here across each of the asset classes, a really thoughtful process that we do each year, we're not looking at time of market tomorrow, this is ten and twenty year, twenty year outlook, but we do, you know, recognize where we are in the cycle or recognize where we are as a starting point for, for interest rates to kind of forecast investment return assumption, so this portfolio today, you know, really is modeling out to about a six point three return, annualized return over a twenty year period and that pretty much aligns with your discount rate, if you add a little bit of what I call, you know, alpha or excess return from active management, you know, maybe you're closer to about a six and a half percent return, which we think, you know, give quarter discount rate is, 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 is pretty reasonable, right, you're really in line, high probability of achieving that return. Again, if your discount rate was seven and a half and, and we're modeling out six, you know, six point three, you know, we probably have a, a, a bigger discussion, you know, along with, along with with Freddie saying, hey, look, you know, your, your discount rate at, at X and your expected return on your portfolio is a pretty disconnect, you know, remember that even if you don't have a negative return and it returned shy of that discount rate would be an actuarial loss, that's not the case for Legger. You know, as, as somebody mentioned earlier, you know, you're really good shape, when you look at your plan's funded status, you had a twenty-five percent return for the most recent fiscal year ending six thirty, the six and a quarter discount rate is certainly conservative when we look across the Connecticut landscape. But, you know, we do think, you know, we want to be forward looking, right, so, you know, where can we add some incremental value? And again, when I say adding some incremental value, where can we add some, you know, some, some meaningful, you know, change to the portfolio, I'm not talking about driving or enhancing the overall return profile, but maybe providing some diversification benefit, so, you know, one of the thinking areas of thought rather is, is, is part of these modeling efforts is, is real assets, you know, can that play a role in the portfolio in terms of tempering, you know, volatility and you can see here in terms of the volatility, you know, maybe our return profile declines by a basis point, a, a couple of basis points, but our, but our, you know, volatility declines as well and, and real assets would be a strategy that encompasses, you know, infrastructure and, and mining and energy and resources and re, so it's a really broad diversified strategy that can get you, you know, a different return stream than public equities, it could also serve to mitigate interest rate risk, so we think maybe a a starting point would be, you know, maybe a five percent allocation, now, I'm gonna bring forth at our next meeting just a supplemental report that looks more closely at real assets, you know, a strategy that we're looking at and then I'm gonna talk about the fixed income asset class in a moment. So we do think that, you know, maybe real asset plays a role in this portfolio going forward, it doesn't materially change the overall strategy, but again, we think it provides an additional source of return, a different profile outside of, of, of really kind of the public equity return structure. So let me just jump to, I did, I spent a little bit of time on, on the portfolio last time and again, just, just to highlight, you know, the allocation, as you can see how we're managed today, so as I mentioned, we're running basically a sixty forty portfolio, the cash position really is just a byproduct of the need for benefit payment, so this isn't any market timing on the part of us or the part of the committee. Our, our, our cash, you know, obviously you're, you're, you know, there's really a penalty to hold cash these days, if you think about it, negative real rate of return, right, you're getting a you know, maybe ten basis points of the money market account, but, you know, the cash is a byproduct of, of, of expenditures for the portfolio and, you know, and then we look at the fixed income portfolio and I think we've got three really good strategies, right, and I'll talk about this in a moment, so we've got a Vanguard Total Bond Market Index and and that's gonna give us exposure to the US bond market, but it does have a high concentration in, in government securities, so something we're certainly cognizant of, so I think with it brings a good deal of interest rate risk, very little credit risk, but a lot of interest rate risk. And then we've got two active managers, MetWest and Prudential, and both of these managers kind of go at the fixed income market in a, in a core plus way, so they're gonna look at the Vanguard Total Bond Market Index as kind of a barometer, which is, which is benchmark against the Barclays Ag and, and kind of sector weight and duration weight relative to that benchmark, they're gonna add incremental value with, within some of the sectors like high yield and maybe emerging market debt and CNBS and ABS type of securities, but for the most part, it's a, it's a high quality core plus strategy, but you're gonna have a duration profile kind of very similar within a year or two to the, to the index and that, what I say by duration, duration just measures a bond price's sensitivity to changes in interest rate, so if I had a bond portfolio with a duration of seven years, if interest rates moved up by a hundred basis points or one percent, right, my bond portfolio would decline by seven percent, so that's really kind of the sensitivity of the prices of the underlying portfolio changes in interest rate, so duration does measure that sensitivity. In a rising interest rate environment, you kind of want to temper that duration exposure so that you don't incur, you know, you know, losses as, as, as rates, as rates move higher, we'll talk a little bit of how you might be able to achieve that. And then domestic equity is diversified, we added in a timely way the kind of the small cap managers, small cap value and, and small cap growth and. small cap value and and small cap growth in December, which had, you know, big numbers for the month. And then you'll see our international allocation as well. The the Touchstone Large Cap Value Focus in the domestic market was designed to mitigate some of the risks from the cap weighted structure of the S and P five hundred. You'll see in a moment, it's delivered really solid results. So, yeah, I think that was a good trade put out by the committee, and then certainly the the exposure to small cap adds as well. But when I talk about the fixed income portfolio, here's where we get a little bit more granular in terms of 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 the individual managers themselves and then looking at the portfolio in in totality. So we have MetWest, we have Prudential and Vanguard. And here you can see kind of the yield, right? Here's the kind of the yield to maturity, two point three percent, you know, the prue is relatively flat. Vanguard's at about one point seven percent. You can see the duration profile about six point nine years, which is, you know, really consistent with the. So, you know, kind of one of our thinking here is is, and and again, this will be in our supplemental report as we look at the fixed income. One is we're not going to suggest, you know, really altering the the fixed income allocation. But within here, you know, can we bring in a flexible mandate at maybe a five or seven or ten percent weighting? That would have a much lower duration profile and mitigate some of that interest rate risk going forward. And it is designed to produce a little bit more of a higher yield, but but also mitigate, you know, some of the interest rate risk associated with the with a Vanguard Total Bond Market Index. So now, we wouldn't suggest abandoning this strategy. We do think that it serves as an anchor and and a really nice defensive posture when markets go south. So back during the financial crisis, you know, this Vanguard Total Bond Market Index, when everybody was gravitating towards, you know, treasuries, you know, can serve a valuable role in in really volatile time when when investors had that risk off trade and are and are looking at treasuries as as safety. So I think we're going to do a little bit of restructuring in the portfolio here. Again, not altering the overall credit quality, right? We don't want our fixed income portfolio behaving like our equity portfolio. But we do think there's there's some, you know, maybe some subtle changes that are warranted, given, you know, that we're likely to see, you know, higher rates, you know, going forward. And how can we mitigate some of that, some of that risk? So so more to come on that supplemental report, which will also take into account really, you know, real assets and how that could play a role in the portfolio as well. But the numbers have been pretty strong. So for the quarter, we are up almost four percent for the quarter. These are net numbers, right? Versus the benchmark that was at three, four. I mentioned that we had a a solid twenty five percent return for the fiscal year. That's important, right? Your your number that you're focused on is that six thirty number. That's the number that goes in the books, right? So so that that number, that twenty five percent versus the discount rate of six and a quarter, you know, certainly helps your funded status, whether from, you know, gas purposes or accounting purposes or or funding purposes, you know, certainly marketable improvement. But this marks really the the third consecutive calendar year where we've had some outsized return, right? And and again, this is a simply a sixty forty portfolio, nineteen percent in two thousand nineteen, almost fifteen percent in twenty twenty, and then we had a little over ten and a half percent return for calendar year twenty twenty one. And as you do a look through, I think the takeaway and the look through is really, you know, since inception, just really kind of a solid performance from Gendolai and managers. So, you know, you look at these numbers when we put these managers in the portfolio, some a little bit more recently, right? So these lower numbers are kind of peer group rankings. And the lower the number reflects the better performance, absolute numbers versus a peer group of similar managers. So you see MetWest, since we put in the portfolio and Prudential, you know, both top quartile managers, Touchstone, a top quartile managers, Newberg, Berman, top decile manager. You know, the Vanguard S and P five hundred is kind of tough bogey to beat over time. That's why we have such a really kind of a big weight to it. I mean, you think that's an efficient market, but we can take a little bit of risk off the table with this Touchstone strategy. You can see that, you know, they've delivered solid results since we put in the portfolio. And then more recently, in the month of December, right? Here's your inception date. You know, we can see that William and Blair, you know, returned six point one percent for that month, three percent for the small cap growth of both these managers, again, in the in the in the top quartile. And really the same theme here, top quartile, top third for the active managers in the international sleeve as as well. So, you know, we think that we've we've got good managers in in the in the lineup, particularly really in our fixed income sleeve as well. So I think the next steps to kind of maybe wrap up is is, you know, looking at maybe a little bit more diversification really within the fixed income sleeve here. And then how can a five percent allocation of real assets through a really diversified structure, you know, provide some diversification benefits and a hedge against inflation going forward? And we'll get you that report and and come out and and walk you through that for for additional discussion. So I'm going to share in moments if there's any questions from the group.
Hey, Chris, this is Dan. I have I have a a quick question on slide twenty three, where you talk about the case for diversification. And if I look at that, I I assume the real assets fall primarily into the the blocks that are the REITs and the commodities, would that be a fair statement?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think we'll probably, this this will get, you know, maybe adjusted going forward to be a little bit more broad, you know, real asset category. But yeah, so this this slide that you're talking about, you know, I call it the quilt chart, right? And so what we've done here has gone back o- over the last ten years, each calendar year, and identify the top performing, you know, asset class for that calendar year. And at the bottom, you'll see the worst performing asset class. And it doesn't necessarily mean that a a worse performing asset class has a negative return, just saying that the number itself would would rank it at the bottom. So in in two thousand seventeen, you can see emerging markets, right? We're up thirty seven percent and commodities were up one point seven percent. And then you look at two thousand and eighteen, right? Emerging markets were the worst performing asset class, fast nineteen. You see EM up, you know, closer to the top. Year to date, emerging markets, we're we're down about two and a half percent, so.
And and I real, I I realize, obviously, like I always say, past performance, you know, no guarantee of future results. But just taking a quick look at the chart, I I guess I'm wondering, do you think your real asset focus going forward is going to be a little bit more of a focus on REITs versus commodities? Just because as I read that chart, again, I know past performance is no guarantee, but REITs do pretty well in in all the different environments. Commodities look to struggle quite a bit.
Yeah, I would say commodities as an asset class never recover. Like this is going back, maybe going back to almost the global financial crisis. That's one asset class that really struggled to to recover. I think it's only recently, right? In 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 twenty twenty one, when you look up at the top here, commodities were one of the better performing asset class driven by energy. And then obviously, REITs have done well in a very conducive accommodative interest rate environment, you know, over the last decade. The real asset strategy that we're looking at would have a weighting in commodities, a weighting in in REITs, a weighting in infrastructure. So it's much, you know, agriculture, you know, you name it. I mean, it's going to be a more diversified approach that's going to encompass both REITs and commodities. But it doesn't have really, you know, most portfolios will approach these asset classes like commodities or REITs and have a static five percent, three percent allocation. What we're suggesting is, look, you know, we we know the return profile can be different. Let's get a manager who who manages the real asset bucket, but he or she can kind of make those calls on, should we be overweight or underweight REITs or commodities based on their outlook? And we'll show you a good example of that in the supplemental report in terms of, you know, how that how that strategy, you know, we'll do a look through of that strategy in terms of its broad diversification across, you know, real assets, which would be REITs and commodities as well.
Okay, good. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Yeah. Any, any other questions or, Chris, you gonna continue? I think that that covers covers for for my, I know I touched on the numbers in in performance of of fourth quarter at the June meeting. You know, I think the takeaway from this meeting is, you know, the current asset allocation strategy is 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 aligned with the discount rate. Yeah, I think what we'd like to do is be a little, you know, forward looking and say, okay, can we make some tweaks in the fixed income portfolio? You know, cognizant of the credit profile, right? We don't want to take equity like risk in the fixed income portfolio. We don't think giving your discount rate. But we do think there are some inherent risks in fixed income going forward that we're, you know, the Fed has telegraphed, you know, rising interest rates. How can we maybe, you know, mitigate some of the interest rate exposure? And then I think in real assets, it's just another return stream within the portfolio, you know, that gives you that exposure to infrastructure, REITs, natural resources, commodities, tips in in just a tactical manner that you can also serve as the hedge against inflation.
And and Chris, so what are you pointing, so so you're gonna, right now, we have about, I don't know, it looks like about a seven year duration on a lot of the bonds. Do they, that needs to be shortened because of inflation?
Yeah, yeah. So so I think what we would do, so that seven year duration would suggest that all things equal, if interest rates moved up a hundred basis points, our fixed income portfolio would would decline by about seven percent or so, right? And and so, you know, it's very difficult to to predict interest rates, right? You know, the Fed could go out and and raise interest rates two or three times. Maybe they get overly aggressive, and now they got to cut interest rates. Maybe, you know, Ukraine and Russia conflict deteriorates in something where, you know, really spooks the markets and investors, you know, start gravitating towards treasuries. You know, that drives rates down as well. So it's very difficult to predict interest rates. But we do think, just given inflation, given where the Fed has telegraphed, that we could temper back a little bit of that duration profile. But we could also do so without giving up a a kind of yield on the on the fixed income portfolio as well.
They all seem to have close to the same duration, so you couldn't reallocate to get a shorter. How did, how did you get a shorter duration without going with a?
Yeah, so so the strategy that we would bring in is is a BlackRock unconstrained strategy. So it's not tethered, right? So if you look at the MetWest and the and the and the Prue strategy, their benchmark is the Barclays Aggregate Bond Index. And the very nature of that bond index has a duration, I'll run that, is is seven years. So the very nature of their strategy, they're not going to be at a two year duration or a ten year duration. They're going to be really close to that benchmark. And then they're going to add value through security selection. Are they going to be overweight investment grade corporates and underweight high yield? So that's where they're going to add some value. So how do you mitigate some of the duration risk? Is you bring in another strategy that maybe has a duration profile of a year or two, but also gets you that sex, uh, sector exposure, the way Prudential and MetWest does. Patient will then drop your, you know, overall weighted duration profile down a little bit. And that strategy, by the way, is up about, you know, one and a half percent, positive one and a half percent, where the ag is 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 down this year. So it's it's done pretty well.
Chris, if we could take a look at the asset allocation chart on page ten.
On page ten, the the chart or the IPS range?
The actual chart. So our IPS was a range for domestic equity of twenty to forty percent. A target is thirty eight percent, but we're currently outside of that range. Do we need to update their the policy statement?
Yeah, we should probably, you know, you know, move that range out a little bit to give us a little bit more flexibility. So, you know, maybe move in that range to about, you know, forty five percent because our target at thirty eight percent. You know, you'd want that flexibility to to allow, you know, sort of the equity portfolio to continue to to, you know, participate in the rally and then rebalance accordingly. So we could bring the IPS back to the to the table at the at the March meeting. We'll suggest an edit to this range, which would suggest that it gives us a little bit more flexibility.
I agree with that. We've been outside that range in the past. So if we we're in agreement, the range should be expanded, and I think it should. We should move that to forty, forty five percent, or even fifty percent.
Yeah, and and we would probably tighten the lower end of the range as well. So, you know, maybe, you know, kind of like the fixed income range here, twenty five to fifty, twenty five to forty five. You know, at the end of the day, we do monitor the portfolio. When we get, you know, five percent north of our of our targets, you know, maybe it's an opportunity for us to step back and say, look, you know, is it time to rebalance a portfolio? What are market conditions like? So again, that's that's, you know, it's a reasonable request, and I think we could, we could make that adjustment accordingly. The other questions, comments? Dan, you okay?
Yeah, I'm also done. Thank you.
Karen? Yes, not Karen. Good, okay. Okay, well, Chris, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you said you'll be back next next month? Uh, yeah, I think we'll deliver the 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 report at the for for the March meeting, and we can go through some of our observations, recommendations, and have a good discussion and actually see where we want to go. Okay, okay, very good. Thank you. Well, thank you, and have a great week.
Hey, you too. Thank you.
Hi. Okay. Moving back to our agenda, first order of business is review and approval of the January eighteenth minutes. Do I hear a motion?
It's all moved.
I will second that. Okay, are there any comments or changes in the minutes?
Okay, John, I just had a small one on the item four on the presentation where it talks about Chris's presentation to us. Should the acronym for those guys be F A? Unless you really want to say no, Dan, F you. No pun, no pun intended.
Okay, yeah, we should change F I A, start going to F A. Is that okay? All right.
Well.
No, no, I'm sorry. Oh, it's a typo.
No, it's a typo, I think. I think they meant to say F A. It just says it's in two places on that first bullet on the top of the page.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, Christina's got that. So, okay, anything else? If not, all in favor?
It was just, there was just, oh, I'm sorry, one other real small typo on item seven. The second bullet, there's, it says approval of the pension contribution. There there's a extra P in a bracket in there, it looks like, just a typo.
Okay.
That's it. Sorry.
Okay, very good. Okay, with those internal comments, all in favor?
I.
Okay. Group, okay, okay. Next is Finance Director, Matt?
No.
Nothing? Okay. All right, I'm sorry. Don, I skipped over you.
I'm I'm. My discussion will all fall into the old.
Okay, very good. Okay, so with that, we'll move to old business, Don.
Um, I just a quick update, so everybody's aware. We started out with thirty six individuals that had not invested funds in the pension plan. Certified letters went out, excuse me, end of November, very early in December. We had nine people, sorry, excuse me, eleven people who actually responded, completed the paperwork and have, the distributions have been made through Webster Bank to those individuals. Those eleven. Sixteen of the certified lawyers came back with no forwarding address. We have since tracked down fifteen of them through the good services of our tax department and our tax collector's office. So we have sent out fifteen new letters to those people on the new addresses. So we will expect some kind of response from them. Overall, we had nine individuals who we got certified. We got notification, they got the certified letter, but they've never responded. So those, those will, at some point, we will issue checks from Webster Bank directly to those people. We know the address is correct, and they will get a check from the mail. And we'll follow up as we move forward with the fifteen people. Those certified letters just went out last week, and we finally tracked all those people down. The motion that's in front of you is very similar to the one you approved in November. But as Bob Lebrun at Webster Bank pointed out to me, it did not specifically say you were authorizing the distribution of the money. We were talking, the original motion was to track the people down and send them a letter. So this is a full motion language which authorizes Webster Bank to. So this is a full motion, um, language which, uh, authorizes Webster Bank to do the distribution, which they've already done because. Approved the correct motion, so. So that is why there is another motion relating to this.
Is this a modification of the original?
It is correct. Yes, it's correct. So I didn't think, but I don't know what that, how Robert's rules handles. It added the specific language that allows Webster Bank to disperse the funds.
Okay, the checks you're sending out, is that taxable money for the recipient?
It is taxable unless they roll it into our, uh, qualified plan, which, um, none of them have chosen to do at this point.
Are they aware of that?
Yes, that's all instructed in the letter. Yeah.
Okay, so we'll be doing once the check is sent to them.
I think they have sixty days. Isn't it like sixty days they have, Don, to roll it over?
Okay, so they can take the check and roll it over.
Yeah, yeah. My understanding is you could still take the check, but I think it's, I think it's sixty days. You have to roll it over into a qualified plan.
Yes.
Hey, Don, I'm just, I'm just curious, Don, um, how much are they talking on some of these checks? Are we talking hundreds, a couple hundred dollars? Are we talking thousands of dollars? I mean, I'm just curious.
The nine people that, uh, have, or excuse me, the eleven people that have received dispersments total eighty-one thousand dollars, ranging. Nine hundred dollars to seventeen thousand dollars. So some of them are are significant chunks of money. Most of them at around three to five thousand dollars.
So, yeah, I'm surprised more people aren't responding. Okay, thank you.
Right, because there was a period of time when they had to be here for ten years. That was changed in two thousand eleven.
Okay.
Um, so anyway, they're in, I I I don't know, I mean, some of the my numbers are pretty significant, as I said. Seventeen thousand, that's their contributions plus the interest over the years. Um, and that one individual left in two thousand. Sorry, two thousand seven, so.
Plus the interest, I mean, yeah. Okay. So in addition to the notification of a letter, you would then follow it with a tax form, so they know they have to claim that on the tax.
Correct. So then, if there is no instruction to go to a qualified plan, Webster's withholding the taxes.
Yes.
To twenty percent and six percent for Connecticut, and then distribute it to them, and they will get a tax form. To that effect, yes.
Webster sends that.
Correct, yeah, okay.
Thank you. All right. Okay, any other questions on this? Okay, if not, I will make, uh, I will make a motion. This is the modified motion. Motion to send a letter to former town employees who are not fully vested in the town of Ledyard Pension Plan. And notify them of the amount currently available and offer the option to withdraw the funds. Or roll over to a qualified plan of their choice. Are you a second?
Second. I didn't finish reading it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that whole thing, okay. Webster Bank will be directed to disperse funds according to the directions of the former employee. Send a check directly to those who do not elect a choice. For individuals who are not located. Webster will be instructed to disposition the funds through the state of Connecticut, unclaimed property division.
Second.
All right. Okay, any questions on that motion?
Um. Yeah, um. How many right now are totally, we can't find? One, just only one individual. We're still working on it.
Got anything else, Craig?
Hey, Don, in the letter, do you, do you give them a timeframe of when you expect them to respond by? Because I thought you said a few of them haven't responded.
Sure, uh, I don't have a copy of the letter in front of me. I believe there was a time, a suggested timeframe.
Okay.
I can't, I'm sorry, I can't answer that without looking at the letter.
No, but I mean, there's something in there where we say, hey, if we don't hear back from you within thirty days, we're just going to go disperse it off to the state of Connecticut. You can go find it there.
I don't believe it was that specific in the.
Okay. But at least we give them a timeframe, so they have a sense or some sense of urgency. Okay, thanks.
Okay, okay, if you have, okay, if not, all in favor?
I.
I.
Okay. Then moving on to new business. Uh, we've already done Freddie's, uh, presentation. Okay, uh. I make a motion to approve next year's pension contribution increase of three percent. The amount is currently one million, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, one hundred, five hundred and twelve dollars.
Sorry, clarification, we, um, number one's going to require a vote.
Yes.
Yes, so.
Oh, that's right, okay.
I don't know if you want to do that later, but I just don't want to forget. You need to approve the statement of work.
Okay, that's right. Uh, okay, uh, I make a motion to approve the statement of work from Frederick Daniels, U S I actuaries.
Second.
Any discussion on that? And that's the, uh, the amount that was what?
It's, uh.
Fifteen hundred dollars?
Four thousand to five thousand, four, excuse me, four thousand to forty-five hundred dollar projected cost.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. What is, okay, motion, item three is a different, that's a different item, okay. What's, what'd you say, Don, four thousand?
Four thousand to forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh. And we'll be second to that. Okay, anything else? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Okay. Uh. Next is a motion to approve next year's pension contribution increase of three percent. The amount is currently one million, one hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and twelve dollars, adding three percent, referring the amount to one million. One hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
This is just the middle year where we usually just add the three percent.
As I mentioned before, I I do not support this motion. Uh, I believe that, you know, if you look at. At the returns that we've been getting, even in some of the bad years over the past ten years, it's, uh. I lost the number now. I think it's eight point something percent, it's a, do I? Okay, lost the page there. Uh. You know, I think we're on track. I think we're doing very well when you compare it to six and a quarter or six percent, or even six and a half percent rate. So, uh. I will modify the motion to change the number to maintain the contribution of one million, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Five hundred and twelve, uh, one million, one hundred and twenty-nine, five hundred and twelve dollars. So I hear a second to the mo, to the amendment. Okay, if not, then we will move back to the made motion. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
And I can just say, I mean, the only reason is, we we sort of agreed. I mean, we, I'm not sure we have enough data. I mean, we've always said in, uh, uh, years, in between years. We would do three percent. Next year, we'll have more data, uh, in terms of, after we get the, it's every other year, right? So next year, we'll have, actually, yeah, this is just kind of.
Yeah, I I I under, I understand, and it's a small amount, everything like that, but, um. You know, I think, and I've I've made this speech every year.
I I understand.
You know, it's it's a minor thing, but, you know, uh, you know, thirty thousand dollars is thirty thousand dollars when the mayor's trying to put a budget together. Uh, I think they're always going to be conservative in their recommendations. There's no reason they wouldn't be. Uh, but we've shown through, you know, through Chris's guidance that we have done extremely well. And again, I bring up the example, as I did before, of Norwich and State and the situations therein. And, you know, if we get to this point, uh, you know, ten years ago, ten years from now, whatever. Uh, you know, hey, the taxpayer's still there. It's not going to be a bomb dropped on the taxpayer at that point. Because, yeah, I don't know. But, uh, anyway, so back to the main motion, uh, any other discussion?
Don, I would just like to say something. I know it's thirty thousand dollars more in the town's budget, but thirty thousand dollars more put in the investments. Is going to earn us a lot more and eventually get us to our goal sooner. We've been doing this now for a long time, and I can remember when the pension was four million dollars. It's thirty-two million dollars. We're finally getting somewhere. I'd hate to reduce the funding.
Okay, okay, uh, that, all in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed? No. Okay, motion passes. All right, uh, next item, I move to approve the U S I invoice dated twelve thirty-one twenty-one. We mounted fifteen hundred dollars for consulting benefit calculation services for terminated vested participants. Previously thought to be non-invested participant benefit distributions.
Second.
Discussion or discussion?
Okay, this was probably discussed the last meeting, I missed or something. I don't understand.
Yeah, Don.
Um, when, when the whole, excuse me, when the issue first came up about the not vested individuals. Um, we did a deep dive into that group of people, and there were actually people listed in there as non-invested who were vested. So, um, and this was, this all came down from Seagull. Um, so we had to go back, they had to go back and recalculate, do some recalculations to move those people who were invested.
Any other questions? Not, uh, all in favor?
I.
Okay, and, uh, finally, I move to approve the fiduciary advisors invoice number six oh nine, one, two, three, one, two, oh, two, one. Dated January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two, the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. For town of Ledyard defined benefits from October first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Discussion, question? Okay, all in favor?
I.
Okay. Any other business? Any other business? If not. A second minute, okay? We are adjourned. All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Bye.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.